Call this meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska government body, the city of Seward, divided by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act and Conducting Business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. If participant's sign and sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Resonator shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record and ask the limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the rule.
Wilkins.
President.
Beck, Smith, Amper, Holden, Merson, Noah, Singleton, Schmidt, Henry. President.
First item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of July 16, 2019.
Smooth.
Second.
Give a motion and a second, resume for discussion. Saying no, please register your votes, please display the votes.
I'm in favor, Wilkins, Beck, Hamper, Holden, Merson, Noah, Singleton, Schmidt, Henry.
Items two and three are the consent agenda items for this evening.
Smooth.
Okay.
Give a motion and a second, resume for discussion. Saying no, please register your votes, please display the votes.
I'm in favor, Wilkins, Beck, Hamper, Holden, Merson, Noah, Singleton, Schmidt, Henry.
Item four is a public hearing for 7:00 PM liquor license application. Estanislao? I'm gonna pass on that. And we have items A and B. A is the resolution recommending approval of the Class C liquor license and then B is the application recommending for a manager, Adriana Madrid. So does council have any initial comments or questions? This is a public hearing, so we can do the public comment portion of the public hearing first. Anyone from the public wish to comment on item number four? Yes, welcome.
Do I come up here?
Yes, please.
Hello, I'm Leanna Steele with Steele Law Office in Grand Island. And I have helped Estanislao Gutierrez. He owns Estanislao LLC and he owns La Prachina Mexican Restaurant York. And he would be the owner of the La Prachina Mexican Restaurant Seward. And then this is Adriana Madrid. You wanna stand up for a minute? She would be the liquor manager for the Seward location. Thank you. And this is Gabriella Gutierrez and she is the liquor manager for the York La Prachina. And so they are the management team. And we have submitted the liquor license already that's out here. They have, is it, the location is 444 Seward Avenue across from Catman National Bank. And it is in the process of getting remodeled and it looks so cool. Going to be bright blue, bright yellow, lime green inside and great, great menu. Coconut shrimp salad, many steaks, ribeyes, so there you go. That's, and we are here to apply for a liquor license. They have also gotten the Seward revitalization grant, you know, and so they are anxious to come to your city and hoping to open by the end of August. And they have gotten all new furniture from Mexico and it's already on site, so that's the latest that we have. So if you have any questions?
Any questions or comments from the council?
I'm excited.
They are very excited.
We should drop hard of your community. Yeah, pregame.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on item, item number four? If not, then I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Again, before us, we have item number A, which is consideration of a resolution recommending approval of the Class E liquor license.
I'll introduce your resolution.
The resolution has been introduced and it designated as resolution number 2019-21. Anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Who's approved?
Give a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
I'm in favor, Wilkins, Beck, Hamper, Holden, Merson, Noah, Singleton, Schmidt, Henry.
Item B is consideration of an application recommending Adriana Madrid as manager of a Class E liquor license for Estanislao LLC. Anyone else have any other questions or comments? Like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, resume for discussion. Saying no, please register your votes, please display the votes. Well, we're very excited to have you in Seward and we look forward to you being open and wanna welcome you to our community. You're welcome. You're welcome to stay, but if you'd like to leave, you sure can at this time.
Thank you so much, thank you. It means a lot to them, they're very excited to be here.
Me as well.
Thank you so much.
All right, item number five, appointment. Appoint Stacy Par to Civil Service Commission to replace Alan Theobald for a five-year term.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, resume for discussion. Saying no, please register your votes, please display the votes. Item number six, consideration of a resolution with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for conducting the 2019 fracture critical bridge inspections. City engineer Vasha, welcome.
Thank you, good evening. So the agreement in front of you is for our portion of the bridge inspection, which is the Hillcrest Bridge, which is just on the east side of town within our city limits. This is the last year that NDOT will be participating in any assistance for bridge inspections. So I believe this year we're paying 20%. So in the future, it'll be completely on our dime, which it varies a little bit, but usually between $2,000 and $3,000 per inspection.
Any question, your comments for Jake? Yes, John?
Is that the only bridge we're having inspected?
Correct. That's the only fracture critical bridge that we own.
What about the one on the south side?
It's owned by the county.
Is that the county's?
Yep, and the county is working to replace that bridge this, they're currently in a project that they'll...
Yeah, I believe that bridge will be replaced this next calendar year. And that is the only other fracture critical that I'm aware of in the area.
Any other questions or comments? Sound like to introduce the resolution? Resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number 2019-22. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Amen.
Second.
Motion and a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. Item number seven, consideration to request from Nebraska Department of Economic Development an extension for downtown renovation project on 2/11/2020. Greg?
Yes, our current downtown revitalization projects are scheduled to be completed by November 8, 2019. Working with Trey and our different project holders. We continue to run into some, we continue to run into trying to schedule and get online with subcontractors willing to do the work for the days vacant prices and stay within our quotes of the amount that we were given. And so we continue to struggle to find glass contractors and everything else that will come out and work with us at those wages and make things work. And so due to that, we were talking with Trey and he said, "We probably wanna ask for an extension at this time." And you can ask for an extension of any amount of time up to a year. And he said, "Well, if you're gonna ask for it, you might as well ask for the year, 'cause otherwise you're gonna keep coming back and asking for another." And at that point, they don't care as long as they know that you're going to ask. Our hope would be that we round these up and be completed no later than early spring so that potentially me and Jonathan, we received news this year that we won't have to go through the Phase One process again. Traditionally in the past, you had to do a Phase One again, so another study and another plan to ask for Phase Two. They just said this year that once you complete your Phase Two project, as long as you have a Phase One that is still a plan you wanna move forward with, you can come back and ask for another Phase Two. So we would like to be done with these funds in a reasonable amount of time in the spring. Get everything closed out so that we can prepare our application for next summer and then ask for Phase Two again. And then if we wanna do more downtown revitalization or anything else, we can pick that as a community and decide if we wanna do a bigger project. It's a community project rather, that's more of a public project rather than that. We'll figure that out later in time, but we wanna plan for this and get those wrapped up by hopefully early spring. Get all the money finished up and out and prepare ourselves to ask for another Phase Two.
How many projects are still having trouble?
I'd probably say we have about four or five that are hanging out there. So, and they're mostly the small projects, tends to be glass. Glass was the big one, is finding contractors to come in and do glass that weren't part of a really large project where the, where the general could go get a whole bunch of different subs, it's all over the place. Suzanne's done a great job in helping us work with SCCDP to try and provide names and phone numbers and contacts for SAM-registered contractors that we can put in front of the different applicants and try to get help for them, so. But this is what we've heard talking to Trey, that's in all of the rural, the more rural communities that aren't Lincoln and Omaha, that they're struggling with contractors.
Any other questions or comments on item number seven? Sound like a big emotion.
Would we approve the extension?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, resume for discussion. Saying no, please register your votes, please display the votes. Item number eight, consideration of the request by Seward Community Chamber and Development Partnership to sponsor an event at the Seward Municipal Airport on September 21, 2019, where alcohol will be sold and served.
Yes, I am not Megan.
Welcome Megan.
Representing Megan, she's in Cordova for a different meeting, so. Jonathan Jenk with Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership, this event we've now done for a couple of years. And so basically the same concept as before, offering Nebraska-based beer, wine, and whiskey. And so this year, I guess really the substantive change is that we're having a band play, we're not having fireworks. But other than that, there's nothing out of the ordinary. We will make Lyft and Uber drivers aware that the event is going on, so encourage them to be available to help support people who wanna get safe and drive home. But we also offer designated driver wristbands as well to just encourage safe drinking habits there. So we appreciate the support for our event this year.
Thanks Jonathan, any questions or comments for Jonathan? If, yes, questions?
So what does this request all entail for us?
So I think it's a required step that we have because it's at the Seward Municipal Airport.
City property in order to allow you to have permission. So this has nothing to do with the liquor license because it's outside of city limits, but it's city property.
We, yeah, we went to the commissioners actually to go through that process.
Yeah, that was a good question, it's a little complicated. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, you can motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, resume for discussion. Saying no, please register your votes, please display the votes. Item number nine, consideration for awarding bid for 34.5 to 12.47 KV Industrial Substation Construction Project to IES Commercial Incorporated. Jake?
Good evening. We had a bid letting for the substation, little bid was IES. They were right at our engineers estimate and they were able to meet our timeline as far as construction, our timeline that we set forth in the specs, but also our timeline that we agreed upon with Schuler. One itch that we ran into is they asked for some change in language in our standard contract, at which point we kinda handed it off to Kelly. All of that kinda happened late last week and I think there's still some correspondence that needs to happen, so I would recommend table tonight. At the next meeting, we would, considering what Kelly kinda works out with their attorney or their, with their attorney?
Yeah.
With their counsel, okay. Then we can go from there. Second lowest bid was, I forget the name, but it...
Harold Tools.
Okay, yep. Not too much higher. The only issue there is they weren't able to meet our schedule of February to have the substation completed, so.
Any questions or comments for Jake?
Yes.
So is that the exceptions noted that's on here for the remarks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there were, yep, that's what she meant by exceptions noted.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, look for a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion and a second, resume for discussion. Saying no, please register your votes, please display the votes. Jake, item number 10, consideration for approval of an agreement with Olson for geotechnical investigation of the Seward rail campus.
Okay, this agreement came about just from the NPBD Site Ready Assistance Program, which is a grant from NPBD to match a project that meets the criteria for site readiness. And so we thought of a couple of projects for the rail campus, one of which was geotechnical investigation, to have some lots that aren't platted yet have the, basically have soil boring done so that potential lot buyers would have that information and that would be valuable to them to go ahead and make that decision one way or another on whether they move forward with our site. So we've got Olson prepared our proposal, they've done all the geotechnical work out there. And NPBD's matching 50/50 on this, so it would be 6,000 to them and 6,000 to us.
Any questions or comments for Jake?
But we're doing this not for a specific project, just for our future potential use?
Correct.
How long will this information be valid for?
There's no expiration.
An extra question?
Yeah.
Even then.
I just don't know if these things, a company would come and say, "We have to do it over again," because, you know.
So similar to what Schuler did, so rewind our clocks back. Schuler had geotechnical data as well. We had a boring done at the Schuler site. From their early indication, it looked like it was a pretty good site from a soil standpoint and would be able to handle their building load. So when you do, when you go in and actually design a building, you have to take very specific soil borings on all corners of the building because again, you're, you've got a 10-acre or 5-acre site, whatever it is, and you're taking the soil boring this big and you're trying to represent that 5 acres, which is, you know, kind of ridiculous. But it is good information to have. You don't know if it's representative of the whole site or partial of the site. We do have multiple borings with this agreement to try to narrow that down a little bit, to make these lots a little bit more, well, make the information a little bit more usable, I guess.
So you're doing eight sites?
Eight, eight borings. They're not all on the site, I think there's four lots that we're looking at total. And again, we haven't platted these yet, so that's still forthcoming as well. But it was an opportunity to, to a grant that would help us in attracting future lot buyers.
Is that a comparable fee?
Yes, yes. Very comparable.
Any other questions or comments? Would you entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A motion to approve? Give me a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, resume for discussion. Saying no, please register your votes, please display the votes. Item 11, consideration of a resolution authorizing the signing of the annual certification of program compliance form for the Nebraska Board of Public Growth, Classification, and Standards. Greg?
Yes. Pursuant to a state statutory change that happened this last year, we will be signing off and authorizing our program compliance in regards to a number of items that are listed there on your packet, page 55. Basically that we essentially have adopted records and plans, programs, design standards, construction, how we use our tax revenues. And so, correct if I'm wrong Bonnie, but this is in substitution of some of the things we do in regards to the 1 and 6, correct? Pursuant that legislation, essentially the NDOT decided, "We really appreciate you guys sending all those 1 and 6-year road plans to us and you still have to do them, but we don't wanna see them anymore. We want you to have them on file, on site, and certify it to us that you did them." And that's what this process is now. Because I think internally, they had determined their processes that they were just undertaking a bunch of extra effort that wasn't being utilized by them specifically. And so they went to the legislature and got this statutory change taking place. So essentially now, we go through the same process, we still work through the 1 and 6-year plan and do all the things on our end that we used to do before, but now we just certify that we completed them, we make them available internally, and then that's it. So that's the only change. So this gets us started on that process, we'll certify this year and then we'll go through that process coming up in February as we do every year.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I'd just like to introduce the resolution.
Introduce the resolution?
The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number 2019-23. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Okay.
Second. Motion and a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. Item number 12, consideration of new branding logo for the city of Seward. Hope you had a chance to look at it on your packets. Basically what Kelly was asked to do was to take the previous logo and make it be smoother, smooth out a lot of the lines and the appearance to give it, I think, less of a handwritten look, I think was what was said before, and maybe more of a commercial appeal. And so what we wanted you to take a look at would be a sample of, what a generic one for the city of Seward that make, I believe this is, what, Fourth of July city over the stars as one? Well, the one that, one has, doesn't have that, but that would be an option, would be to put that over the top. And then the rest, as you can see, in one example, we put Parks and Rec is for the departments that wanted to have a uniform look and they could use that banner at the bottom to put in their department as well as a graphic or an image that would represent. So in this case, we just used a tree, there's nothing special that could change. But just to give you an idea of how that would look, so that, that would be that the two differences as you would go from department to department would be the name of the department on the banner at the bottom and then also whatever that, that item would be, in this case, a tree. Or for a different department, it could be something else. Any questions or any thoughts, or I guess Kelly wasn't gonna be here tonight, but wanted you to take a look and see if that was what you were thinking with your comments at the last meeting when we discussed this, or were you thinking something, something else, something different?
I liked three and four really well.
Is that the?
That's the new one, that's the new one.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, new one. I like the Fourth of July city on there too.
On top of like the stars, it's sort of the general, generic one?
That's just me.
Yeah, and that would make sense if we're gonna have it for the others, it would make sense to have it on that one as well. Wanted if you even mind is that this is also kind of the first step in this process, that if you're happy with how these turned out, what we would like then to do is having something that looks a little bit different, but has a similar styling for the rail campus for the downtown courthouse area, because eventually we want, we wanna have some signage in those places. And so, you know, we've done the revitalization project, for example, and one of the things, as we get these projects going and completed, having some historical, a nod to, I guess, to the history of saying, well, you know, here's, here's a sign, maybe, maybe those street, how we have the black, the black light poles right now downtown, you know, maybe we have a special, like for the street signs, you see them, they have a different logo on, that would, could be the logo for that downtown area. So that's what the next step, so if you're happy with, with how this looks tonight, then we would go to the rail campus committee with some ideas for what that could look like, and you've seen kind of an idea of what we're talking about, of how it would fit together. But I just wanted to know what your comfort level was for this, or if you had other ideas? John?
I like the very last one because we are also a tree city.
Sure.
Plus we're putting the Fourth of July on top of it, but I'd like to see it without the banner on the bottom.
Well, the banner would just, like for this one...
That's just for specific departments.
I would just like to, I'd like to see the very last one, but to see it also without the banner?
I think what we're, what...
Are we trying to?
So I think these were the two, and Jessica was suggesting having like Fourth of July city above here, above this one as well. And this would be like the general city one that you would see from City Hall, for example. And then the department, like Parks and Rec, they could, they could use the banner as the name of their department and then they could change this here to something that makes sense. So for Parks and Rec, we just used a tree because it was simple. But it could be something else in here, but the idea would be is that, that way these, these logos all look like they're from the same family, but there's enough difference to where you know, okay, this is a different department compared to the general one here, so. Does that make, does that sound okay? Any other questions or, yes?
How are we paying for this, is there a cost? I guess, maybe you could just go back and refresh our memory on what the impetus of this was.
Sure, so in the, we, well, it first came up was with the rail campus actually, was what are we gonna do for a sign for the rail campus? If you know, there's the airpark sign that they have at the airport for those properties there. And, and the concern was, well, do we wanna put the cart behind the horse and say, "Well, here's a logo for that," but then what would we do for the, for the city in general and for the other, like the downtown historic square? And so before we got to that point, we took a step back and said, "Well, let's maybe look at a new logo, design style first to see, does this make sense for the city?" And then if this was what made sense, then we would look at a, a, a design for the rail campus specific. So we kinda took a step back to get here, if this is fine, we would go forward then and present something to the rail campus to consider for that, 'cause I know, I think Jake and everyone, they're kinda getting to the point where they need to start making decisions on those, on signage. But we didn't, we wanna make it, at least make sense and try to tie it together. As far as the cost, I know the chamber paid for, didn't the chamber pay for part of this, or?
Was it the visitors committee?
Jonathan, I don't recall, do you know?
Yeah, there's a partnership there. I think we have something in writing.
I'm not sure, what did we put, do we put?
We're in the bill yet, well.
Yeah, so we have, I'm not sure yet.
It, it's fairly, it's...
Ultimately, when we go forward, we'll have to, I mean, if we're gonna pay for further designs, signage, and things like that, we'll have to categorize those in the budget for each of those individually. The sign for the rail campus will be budgeted in the rail campus.
We're talking less than $10,000?
Oh, just for the designing of it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it was only, was it a few thousand dollars?
Yeah, I think it was less than a thousand.
Yeah, it wasn't much, to, to afford the design, it's just, what, as you implement it, obviously you have to put it on stuff, that those, that stuff costs money. I guess, so what's your thoughts? I mean, are you comfortable with this? Is there anything that, that concerns you or that you would wanna do different, I guess?
I see a lot of heads yes and no.
It looks great, she did a phenomenal job.
She listened to all of our kind of input and I think it looks great.
To Jessica's point though, would, I guess, would it make sense to continue the Fourth of July city on top of the, of the general one as well? Just so that it ties together? I originally, actually, I originally thought I was gonna do that, but then it didn't, but we were in a hurry. But it might make sense just because of the branding, to have the Fourth of July up here along the top. Are we comfortable with that? Are you any concerned with that? That's a generic one and we would tie the rest in like that same way?
Me personally, I would say we could have the first screen that doesn't have it on there and that's your, your brand. And then you could have the Fourth of July put on there in addition to, I would stick with just this one.
What's our current, what's our current one, does it, is it on the, I thought it was on the current one? Is, okay, so does this?
We use that generically as our letterhead.
Initially for me, I would like to see it, it's like, if we're talking letterheads, envelope, that type of stuff, I like the design on the third page. But I would like to see Fourth of July city somewhere on there since that is kind of the claim of Seward.
Josh says we have the plaque.
Right, and, and so that's where...
Paperwork, I think paperwork.
That would be something more to look, like on the other ones where it's, you know, for the individual departments on top is fine. Like for a letterhead and something maybe underneath it to keep it more square rather than rounding it. Like, for a letterhead and something maybe underneath it to keep it more square, rather than rounding it out, you know, for a letterhead, for all of that stuff. Just shape-wise anyway. But I think this is a good foundation to build everything else off of, around it.
Well, if you're comfortable with that, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, and we'll, we'll move forward with that, and then what I said, the next step would be is to go to the rail campus and be able to present, uh, and you've seen, I think, one, a couple of examples of, of rail campus with rail, wherever traps through it, but have you take a look at that and see, so that way, if we, if the, if they can make recommendations to the council, we can get that design to Jake and them, so they can start moving on the signage down there as well. I don't know if we need a formal motion on this, but just don't come back and say you didn't like it later if you don't vote on it. That was just our question, I'm sorry.
We can make a motion, I guess, if.
It's up to you all, if, unless you're comfortable with that. We're good? Okay. Thank you. Are you, uh, are you relay that to?
I think we just came to the wrong meeting.
I'll, I'll, I'll let her know. I think that's why you're here.
No, we decided when we sat down that we came to the wrong meeting. You're welcome to say that, of course.
We're al, we're almost done. We have one brief report left, so. City administrative report.
Um, I'll just hit three highlights today. Uh, for those that weren't in attendance, we did have the groundbreaking for the Schuler project. Uh, we had a hundred and seventy of our closest friends from across the city, business leaders, dignitaries, uh, a lot of people from Schuler. Uh, the site selection team came back into town for it. Uh, it was a, a great event. A little hot out there in the coat, shirt, and tie, standing out in the middle of the dirt, but other than that, I think it was a great event. Uh, kudos to Jonathan, uh, and his crew for putting on, they did a lot of work, Suzanne and Megan, to get that going, and, uh, Governor Ricketts was there. And so, a, a great turnout, and I, I think Seward's very excited to, to get to this point in the project. Um, the other one is be prepared. I'll probably send out, uh, an email to you surveying dates and times for our budget work session. And then we'll get the copy of the budget into your hands, so you can prep that, uh, and then we'll do the work session, and then we'll do the formal meetings on the budget, in the next coming few meetings. So, we'll, uh, look for that email, and we'll survey some different dates and times, because I know people are still kind of finishing up their summers and years, so we'll do that. The last one is we completed the North Columbia, a major street project for the year, was completed, asphalt mill and overlay. Uh, kudos to Mel and Jake for their oversight on that project, and thanks to the citizens for putting up with some detours and some headaches and things like that, but uh, I think overall, uh, it turned out pretty well, and we'll finish up some things, put some paint down on the ground, get some crossings back on there, uh, still this week.
It's as smooth as it will ever be, so take advantage of that. Go with God as many times as you can.
Gold roller blade on it.
That's really nice. That's very good.
So, other than that, I will answer any questions you have.
Any questions or comments? Otherwise, there can be a motion to accept the report.
Who can accept the votes?
Second. We have a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please spread the votes. Do you have any feature requests for council agenda items or administrative action?
Just a question, the, the whole logo thing made me think of it, so at Parks and Rec, our last Parks and Rec meeting, we discussed the naming of the golf course. Is that something coming soon? Wait, wait a second. How's that going to move forward?
That will move forward over the winter here. Might want to, I don't know if you guys saw at that meeting the potential logos, too?
Yes.
You might want to look at incorporating these color schemes and things like that into those potential logos, but that will come back to the council, so.
I thought we had a name.
We have, we have what is considered temporary name, as far as the way it's presented to Parks and Rec for the time being. So, obviously, the, honey, stop, tell me. The, uh, the signing job for Enstil says Seward Country Club, so they, as far as removing and changing everything, and so, they, I don't know if it's through you or who, decided to come up with a name other than just Seward Golf Course, or Seward Community Golf Course. So, they threw out a couple suggestions.
We look forward to that report.
Any other, um, requests? If not, um, upcoming events. Jonathan?
Thank you, Aaron. Uh, again, appreciate, I echo Greg's comments. Thanks for the support today, and really, um, the council's leadership on this project. There's a lot to be proud of, and, and so, we're grateful for all your work to get to today. It was, it was exciting. Um, if you haven't been aware, um, there are poultry projects going on across the county. We have actually thirty-two and a half million dollars of new poultry projects going across. I think the city council should be aware of those efforts. There's an open house. Um, the Adam Blackie family, uh, has an open house on, uh, Thursday, August fifteenth, from four to seven. Um, if you're interested in that, we can give you more details. On that same Thursday, we have a business after hours here at, uh, Seward Lumber. Uh, they're introducing the Fairway Woods development to the community, and so, if you want to learn more about, kind of, obviously, you've made your approvals, but now it's getting ready to marketing, um, to sell on, and so, if you're interested in learning more, we'd encourage you to attend. Then the next Thursday, uh, we have both coffee and contacts in business after hours with Seward and Lipton. They have some new, uh, employees there. And then we're moving forward, uh, with our Seward County Housing Study, updating, um, that data. We have, uh, housing listing sessions, um, in multiple communities, and of course, Seward being one of those, on, uh, August twenty-ninth. And so, as we get to the next council meeting, we'll give you more details on that. Thank you.
And just to dovetail off that real quick, on, we did get a notice, I think, on Friday after the, um, after the, the agenda went out about the, the, the one open house. Do you want to?
It's not an open house. Uh, we have a notice of a public hearing. Uh, the date is Monday, August nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven thirty P M. Uh, this is the Seward County Planning Commission. Uh, it'll be held at the Seward County Civic Center, here at six sixteen Bradford Street. There is an application for a conditional use permit for a chicken livestock breeding operation, um, approximately four broiler houses. Uh, it is, the applicant is dusted in black, what, chin?
Blackup.
Blackup, there you go. Uh, and the reason that we specifically received a notice, uh, it is in, uh, section ten, Township ten, Range two east. We are an adjacent landowner. This is basically kind of between donor and the city of Seward, on the southeast, southwest corner of Seward. But, we own property adjacent to this one for the wellfields. Uh, what we refer to as the southwest wellfields, not all the wellfields, just the southwest ones. So, we're within the range of this, and so, we wanted to bring it to the attention of the council that there can be a public hearing on that, so, um, there's information if you want to attend that.
If you, if, any do you want to follow, we can sure email that to you, so you have the.
Could you?
Details, just to make sure, but it's not something that we would, we would plan on, on saying anything other than just to monitor it as a neighbor, because it's outside of our extraterritorial jurisdiction or ETJ, and so, um, but we wanted, in case you felt strongly about it, we want to make sure you're aware of it. So, if you wanted to go, not representing the city or the council, but if you wanted to go and participate, you sure could. Uh, but we can send that to you in an email. Anything else? Jonathan, you're good?
Yeah.
Can I make one comment about something in the report about the event today?
Yeah.
So, I had a chance to sit at lunch next to, um, is it DeeDee Caldwell? She's, I think she owns the site development, her site collection.
It's like her group, yeah.
So, she was telling me about the process, and it came down to three sites, us, one in Kansas, one in Missouri. So, I said to her, so what, you know, what was the tipping point, and she said, you know, they recommended to Schuler, any of these three sites would fit everything that they were looking for. And she said, we really left it up to them as far as which one they wanted, and I said, well, what they base sat on, and she said, "The people and the community," and, because she said those three, that, that they offered all would have worked fine, and so, I thought that was really a neat, anything, you know, to, to say about the su, the city and everybody that, that they worked with, you know, Josh and Jonathan, everybody, and then just their feel of the community, you know, she said, is kind of one of those gut things, and so, when the CEO, what's his name today?
Hall.
Yeah, you know, when he said, "You guys should really pat yourselves on the back and be proud," because it was a competition, um, I thought it was pretty neat to find that out, so.
It was a very educational experience, so. You learned a lot. So, with that, I only use a motion, uh, for Jake. A motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please spread the votes. Thank you all.